This conference will now be recorded.
Well, servlet is used for creating dynamic web pages unlike what we do in normal Java programs. We only get the output in the console. So if you want something that should be related, something like our web pages like HTML pages, then we would be using servlets.
Okay. All right, okay. So servlet is a server side technology basically. So that means a server we cannot we cannot develop the applications.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so so far the core and the J D P C they are, what do you say they are standalone, that means we can run on now. We don't need specifically server. You have, you are able to run the server, right, your system?
No, I haven't had a chance to check if night one o'clock or twelve o'clock only it started getting to my control.
Okay, 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 that's fine. Okay, you you just checked out, you are getting the option, Tomcat option.
Just one second please. I'm not even here taking the over dynamic application one second.
Now server, you are able to add it at the server Tomcat server. Like you can see here server, right, the Tomcat, you are able to find it.
Hmm.
Hello?
No, I can't see servers itself.
Okay, so when you are configuring, you are not able to see Apache Tomcat again?
Uh, well, I I actually didn't try that. Can you just give me one second? I'll just quickly go over. If we don't do dynamic project, then I don't think we can see it. My God, I can't see dynamic project.
So you can see new server, right, and the server's options. Apache, you'll be able to find it or not?
I just can't see servers itself.
Ah, you you can't see server session? So that means you didn't install that one, I think.
Double E, yeah. But in the perspective, in the perspective, I can change it. Oh, my God, I can't see double E.
Okay, that's okay anyway. So let's talk about it and just work on it now. So how do you create a submit, uh, Jyoti?
Well, first we need some backend tool like before we used to have common gateway and after that I guess we got this server thing. So we might need external devices like, you know, Glassfish or Tomcat help in order for us to connect to the server.
Okay.
Uh, with the help of that, we, it acts like some container. Which helps us in container, web container. Which helps us to, you know, get the HTTP request and then give out the response.
Okay, so basically, submit is an API, so that means you mustn't need to add the JAV file. And submit, we can create three ways. How many ways?
Three ways.
By implementing the submit interface or by extending a generic submit or by extending extending HTTP submit.
Okay.
By implementing submit interface or by extending genetic submit or by extending HTTP submit. There are three ways to create a submit. So if I implement the submit interface, as I told you, submit interface, it has a five methods. There are three ways to create a submit. That the first one is implementing the submit interface. Say if I implement my submit interface, it gives me five methods to work on. So what are the five?
Three lives, three lifecycle and two non lifecycle is that one?
Correct. Init service destroy. And these three lifecycle methods and get server config and get server conf in for not a lifecycle.
Not lifecycle, yeah.
But your submit interface contains five methods.
Okay.
If you want to create a submit, you need to implement this. Implement that, if you implement that, you have to override that methods and you have to write some code. Or you can leave it empty. So out of the five, the implementation logic, the implementation logic will write inside init method. Out of five, the implementation logic will write init method. Are you getting, sorry, the implementation logic will write inside the service method.
Service method, yeah.
Service method is the actual one and where you are going to provide the business logic.
Okay.
So something like this, first implements submit, we are writing, first is my class name, submit class name. And when I implement that, by default, it provides me init and service and destroy and remaining all methods also. To create a submit, who do you create a submit? To create a submit, first we need to dynamic web project and then and then I'm going to create a submit. So if at all I have to create a submit, right click on the package, send you and don't select the class. Select it as
submit.
You know that, right?
Uh huh.
Press enter and give your class name. My class name is, let's say, first submit. My class name is first submit. And here, I want to create my submit based on based on implementing submit interface. So that's the reason I wanted you to write a Java X dot submit dot submit. There will be something it is showing you HTTP dot submit, but we are not working on HTTP.
Okay.
We have a submit interface now.
Okay.
This is the first methodology to create a submit. Send next. Okay, and then it will ask you, if you want to call the submit, you need to give a URL. Okay, so this URL basically you have to give in the web document. But you are, whatever you are giving, this URL will be added in your web document. To call this submit, I'm going to give the submit one, uh, first serve something like that. So to call this class, I'm setting the
I thought we should give some local host or something.
Local host, ah, yeah, at the time of running, okay?
Okay, okay.
This is my URL.
Mm hmm.
Okay, so when the time of creation of your class, here you can specify the URL and then say next. And then, so what are the methods you want to have? So you can select it and then finish. So by default, it will give you some setup method. So when I have created first submit. When I have created my first submit. So here it is showing something implements again, we are not supposed to extend, we are just implementing, remove this, we don't need it. We are implementing. The submit interface, fine. So this is how we have created a submit and by default, when you implement all the methods, by default implementation will be given. But we don't want to work on all the methods, we would like to work on only one method, that is service method. So find the service method where it is.
But we have to initialize in order to
order to
do the service. First of all, we have to initialize it with something, right?
So initialization, we need to write something so to see that whether it is started or not. If you want to provide any initial information or any parameters you want to read from a form or something, then you need it. Otherwise, any business logic execution directly you can see. I'm looking empty, but I'm focusing on my service method.
Service method. So here, I thought maybe we have to write something, okay? Even if we just write init method and give it empty, empty body, then also it's going to be just created. Our main logic works with the service method.
Right. So, uh, see, actually, what we are doing is, uh, I would like to set the sponsor when the cloud, when the client gives the request. So based on the URL, if the submit has been mapped. So first installation will be done and then service method will be. But to be installation, we are just overriding and we are not providing anything. That's okay, it not, we don't need to worry about it. So then immediately the service method will be called, but service method, uh, we are providing something, hey, get set the content type, which should be text type, HTML type, and get me the response object. So if I want to write something onto the browser, I need response object. For that reason, on the sponsor, I'm going to call one method called get writer. It gives me a writer object. After getting the writer object, after getting the writer object, I'm allowed to write something onto the browser. So I would like to write out dot, I would like to write out dot just right. Enter, I'm taking locally, B comma C, something like that, yes. So, hmm, uh, A equals some B equals some and C equals A plus some small message I'm writing. So system dot order, sorry, system dot order, that means it shows on the console. But I would like to write on the browser. So in that case, I would like to say out dot print. Ellen.
Oh.
So here, contents a C. So it can be any variable, it's not out or something, I say oh. So with the help of oh, oh, I'm calling oh, print Ellen, a print method. So now this text will be directly printed onto the console. But first of all, we need to run this application on the server. So let's say run as this application on the server. So before running, I should know what is the URL to call this class. We are not, we don't have a form. If I would have a form, we would be maintaining the URL uh, with the help of some HTML files and all. But we are not using a form, so we need to know what is the URL for this class. That means how do I request this form? We can say URL also, informed resourcing. Uh, so I have several submit, but if I want to call first submit class, I must have some associated URL map, URL pattern. So that URL pattern for my first submit is here. So if I want to call my first submit, I need to give from the browser, what I need to give, I need to give this. If this has been mapped with your, with your class name, we call it as a first dummy name. This dummy name with this URL mapped with your submit name, your submit dummy name, then it goes to the class, which is in the package this one. This description and all we don't, there are two tags we have. One is submit and another is submit mapping. So these lines of code is for mapping your, with your URL pattern to your actual class. And this is your actual. Are you getting me?
Mm hmm.
If I run my application on the browser. Only the server. Only the project name and after that, here you are. Hi, this is first submit and the ninety nine value, okay? Project name after it has to come. Okay, you got it?
Okay.
And initialization, if you want to write in the init method, you can write something in the init method. You basically init method is used for installation or to get any configured information. If I want to get some configuration information, which I have configured in the web document. Let's say database information. Database I would like to maintain in the web document, suppose. So that information of that parameter is
Before we used to write web document XML, we are not writing.
I'm sorry?
Before we used to write web document XML also like manually.
Yeah, if you don't
Automatically getting generated.
Yeah, if you don't want to create a web automatically, uh, then we have to create a project in a, the application in a different way. Uh, that that you need to say new. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. So you are not supposed to generate this. Directly say finish, we are not adding web document. So we have created. Now, if I'm creating a submit.
Hmm, so it is like right now. Yeah.
So I did not create any. Without XML I am creating. So when I am creating without XML, I need to say at web submit. To identify this class, I need to use the set web submit. Okay. So now let's write something. Okay, I've extended that one, I think. Okay. So if I want to write something, I need a print writer first. So to get that, I need a response object. PW is equals to, from the response, I can get to get writer. Okay, so anything if I want to write it onto the browser and I need that. An import that is available in the package, I thought I have a package and PW dot and anything, or if you want to write out. Some code I have written. And the URL for this server. Let's see. Stop your server. And remove the projects which are previously there.
Is that like compulsory to remove everything?
Sometimes there will be some mismatch will happen.
Okay.
Due to other applications, your application will also be getting affected.
Okay.
So in case of any problems, the server problems, it will stop because of that. So it is better to remove that existing applications. To avoid a server kind of issues. Application level not server issues. So I've opened this one, but it's my not URL. Server. Hi, this is so, okay, accents.
Mm hmm.
So this is the way we can configure URLs with the web document XML, so we can configure. So to create a submit, there are three ways and we have already seen the first way. And the second way is
Generic.
By using, yeah. So by using genetic select. So let me create a new submit. Which is a my generate. That's my bi genetic select. So when I am using my genetic select, so it should be directly uh, okay, submit interface, it is extending, so generic class it is. So generic class means generic submit is a predefined class. Okay, so I need to change it here, package is same, but the class name is this. Make sure when you are working with the submit interface, you have to write a justice of it. But we are writing index select. Finish, oh, I didn't change the URL. So if I don't change the URL, by default it takes, so if you want to change, you can change it over here. My generate. So this is a URL for my, my genetic select. So if I want to write any executable code, I don't need to, it will not implement, it will not override all the methods. The advantage with the genetic select is he can only focus on our, our method, what is that? Service. But if I implement submit interface, I need to focus off. Like, uh, it will be overriding all the methods. In that case, we don't want to override all the other methods, then go for genetic select. Are you getting me?
Mm hmm.
Hello?
Yeah.
So direct only service method I have, I don't have init method, I don't have any other methods. Are you getting me?
Okay.
I don't have one, I don't have all the methods I have on this method. Now, if I run this application, so I'll be seeing the output, any other implementation, I can write it. Wait, any executable code you have to write in here. So as your service is already in starting mode, I'm just refreshing it and try to give the URL for the genetic select, what is the URL, my generate. So let's see. Hmm. The server got updated, that will work, otherwise we have to restart.
Mm hmm.
It's not getting the updated information.
So we might want to stop and start again or delete.
The application, we need to run this again on server run as. So which class you would like to run, I would like to run. So you can run the whole project level or you can run.
Hmm. Whole project level, then there are many other programs in it, right?
Right, so
The link, but the link, yeah.
Yeah, URL. URL is there now, so it will identify with the
Yeah, but it's going to take a lot of time throughout the project.
Hmm, right. So the point is here, we have maintained my generic. This is my generic. And why I have stole my previous submit, what is my previous submit? That is
So, no.
Server one, I think, right? Let's see. So one, let's see, so this is, so we have created two ways of, uh, this thing and uh, yeah, submit interface and there is another way, what is that?
HTTP submit.
HTTP submit, so we have advantage with this HTTP submit generally. Even uses this HTTP submit only because HTTP is nothing but uh, HTTP is a protocol, hypertext transfer protocol. So it is a protocol specific. So anyway, if I run any application on the server, internally, the call should happen because runs on the browser. The call should has, should has to happen in the form of a HTTP request. The call should has to happen in the form of HTTP request. So it is, they thought it is better to have a HTTP related specific classes. So that, uh, the calls don't need to convert. So that's the reason they have created a separate package. The package is extended the package, that is uh, where is the package? Dot HTTP. One minute. Java X dot, Java extended submit dot, this is extra.
Okay.
HTTP dot and the class is available in this.
Mm hmm.
Your submit, if you want to create a submit interface, this, direct to this one. You want to create index select.
Index select.
Direct package, but if you want to create an HTTP.
It's HTTP dot HTTP submit.
Dot HTTP.
Submit.
It is a class. So first one is interface, the remaining two are classes. And it's got an added methodology. So which one is better means HTTP submit. So again, HTTP submit is extending the existing class as genetic submit.
Okay.
So that means it also have a service method. And which is coming from H G genetics outlet. And also it has the extra methods that is do get and do post. So basically, our implementation will be writing in the do get or do post. So get method is not secure. Post method is secure because. Post means when you say post request, the request will be coming in the form of a body. But when you say get request, the request will be displayed in the. Here. Because if you are giving any username or password, the body also will be displayed in the in the URL bar. That's the reason. When you have a secure data, you are not allowed to use to get. Okay, so like on data or something or other than that, if it is generalized request to get a data, then that's fine. So and it has a limitation. If I say do get means it will not show the entire body of here. And it's the get request, it is invoked by the web container and and is supposed to quit. It is invoked by the container. So service method, we have one from the genetic server and we have a. We have a HTTP server request and response also. Are you getting me?
Yep.
So so these are, whenever you are free, I just wanted you to have a look into these methods and get the difference between these things.
Okay.
And yeah, submit API basically talks about two packages. Java X dot server package and Java X dot server dot HTTP package. These are the two packages what we have. Java X dot server package and Java X dot server dot HTTP package. And Java X dot server package contains a server. I wanted you to see, these are all the class in it. It contains, it's a basic package and it contains fourteen interfaces and eleven classes. Your select interface, sorry, you are the base package.
So this is package. This is so that is generic one and the HTTP is like specific.
Yeah. Correct. Related to all HTTP.
Yeah, it will be like little bit same, just that it have HTTP at the start, I guess. The interfaces and classes.
Right. So there are fourteen interfaces. Out of them. Servered context is, yeah, all are important. A select request, a letter response. Whenever you are using service, so your service method has select request and response.
Mm hmm.
And request dispatcher is something, we will be dispatching a request from one server to another request. And this is our future part anyway. Will be seen in the future, like how the request will be delivered from one server to another. Are you getting me? And the solid config, it will be, you will be using as part of a init method. When you are using any method as a parameter. As a parameter, you will be using that. What do you say? This. Okay. Somewhere we have created previously as a parameter, solid config will be there. So we have to know what is solid config. Solid context and the select actually. There are six objects which are very important.
Okay.
Let is an interface contents methods. Select request is an interface which will be helpful for me to create a request object and a response object. And dispatcher to dispatch the request and configuration to get whatever you have configured in the XML or somewhere. Context wins and that for the entire project, I have ten, ten, ten server. So if I want to get this server's level informations, this context object will be helpful for me. So all these objects will be created by your container. When you give the request, this many objects will be created at the back end. We'll be thinking only our server target will be created now, but all these objects will be created back end, not by us. That will be taken care by your server. In server, we have a web container. The web container is responsible for creating all these objects. And apart from that, we have filter, filter chain, filter config. So these are for authentication and authorization. If you want to, if you're working with any login kind of stuff, then you'll be using filter, filter config, filter chain. This is for authentication and authorization. So we will discuss these things also. So and apart from that, the classes in the same package, we have genetic and so that input or terms. But the major important thing is genetic server. And sometimes. This solid exception. Not all the things. So genetic server is the one which will be. And come to the HTTP package, we have narrow about eight interfaces. And in this, all the. Yeah, all, all of them are important. So seven, the eighth one is deprecated. HTTP server request and response and HTTP session, HTTP sessions. And if you have any events to handle the requests, so event listeners, we have binding listeners. So. And apart from that, you have the classes called HTTP server and HTTP cookie, request wrapper. And response wrapper and session event. So all these are all classes what we have.
Mm hmm.
So I just wanted you to go through them when you are free. So get. Make sure what is there and what. And the hope you got it, three different ways of creating a submit. Okay. The third way is very important, which is closer to our HTTP because when you are saying giving a request, by default, any request. Any request will be converted into HTTP request. So that's the reason vendors thought of giving the HTTP specific. Classes. So that's the reason we have this thing. And you have to write your service method, service larger in the do get or do post. So what happens is your service method will be calling do this do get or do post. Okay, so this is an. Basically, select lifecycle, we have five ways, the five, five things. The first one is initialization and the service.
Service destroy config.
No, 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 one minute. Let's let's cycle loading, creating an object of your particular select. These two steps and after that. And after that, it method and after that service method. So but in case of. HTTP will not be writing inside the service method, will be writing in the do get or do post. In that case, your web container will call the service method. The service method will internally call, will internally call, do get or do post. That's an internal process. That's the reason if you see whatever the service method is there, that is internally calling do get or do post. Two triplex methods, do get or to post. So that's the reason when you are extending HTTP. You are supposed to write a logic inside the do get or do post directly. You don't need to write a service method. Okay, the service method internally calls protected service method and this service method internally calls do get. Or do post. Are you getting me? So but actual implementation, you have to write inside the service. In case of HTTP, the service method will be called, but this service method will internally cause do protected service method. To give the difference they have given and this service method internally calls where you have written the logic that method will be called. And this calls will be taken care by completely your web container. The web container is the one which is available as part of your server. So we have service method dispatches the request to the protected service. Method by converting the request and response into HTTP. So why I need to have two service methods? Remember this, this first service is actual service method of your serverlet interface. And this service method internally dispatches the request to the second service and this takes care of HTTP request and response. So that means your general server request and response objects, we are going to. Dispatch when you dispatch it to here. No, it is not a general service. They are general server request. Their HTTP server request and response. And now this request from the service method and dispatches the request to the next. So now completely, if the call will happen based on HTTP. Why do get and do post? Why cannot I write here? I can write here also. But still, my calls, when I say HTTP means my calls will be basically get or post. Either I have to get or I can. Data, I can submit. In that case, it is better to invoke these two methods. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, so and there are some other methods, but to get and post are important and put sometimes put handles the request. You are putting something that is different. So we just have to know HTTP terminology. There is in the starting. We will be having web terminology. If you click on this web terminology, you will be understanding. What is HTTP? What is static and what is dynamic application? What is the difference between get and post? Okay, just have a look at the process. So three ways of creation of server, we have seen and the next part is. Life cycle also, we have gone through it. First, when when the server is loaded, I have five server. In that, which server is getting loaded? How should I know? So for that, what you are going to do is you have a need method. Init method is empty. So just. Give some SOP in that. So that when you give a request, only that particular server will be started. You'll be getting to know as a status that spell of particular server is loading. Whatever in the init method, first init method is called. So that's the reason before your service method called. So. Just if you write any SOP or something, you'll be getting to know which which is relative we are calling enough. So it loads the select and then depending when you give first request, so it loads the first select and then. If I have five selects, whatever the request you are giving, that server class only will be loaded. The remaining selects will be ideal. Okay, and for that server, only object will be created and init method will be called and service method will be called. And then destroy method will be called. This is a lifecycle process of any server. When the client opens the browser and when he give the request, this entire process will be taken care. And to take care of this process, we need a server and in the server, we'll be having a container. Makes sense? So did you work on it, Marvin?
Sorry.
Marvin, Marvin.
No.
Okay, so in your system, you also will be having a man. Okay, now I just wanted you to show you how do you create a project on based on man. Sometimes if it is silent, that's fine. Sometimes I need to work with the select with the database, select with some other many technologies. So if I'm working with J D B C, yesterday I told you that I need to add a J D B C jar file. If I'm working with Oracle, I need to add work is that. If I'm working with Ibanez, I need to add Ibanez jar files. I don't want to add it manually. So when you're working with a project level, no one uses such kind of jar adding jar files and all, they don't take care. They wanted to go with a different way. In that case, what to do? In that case, they have to use Mammon. Mammon basically a build tool. But since if you want to create a project, any additional resources like chart files adding or whether your project has been. Now the version where file is generating or if it is a standard on application, jar file is generating or not these things. We don't want to handle it by manually. So in that case, we will be using some tool that is called Mammon or and A N D and.
Okay.
Maven or and their build tools, which will take care of some things. So. Man, this is a tutorial. I mean, this is from Apache people. So if you don't have the man, the problem is you need to add the jar files manually. If I have to add hundred jar files, if I'm working on different or some fifty technologies, so fifty jar files or hundred jar files I need to add. I need to add manually, but I don't want to do that. So later I may need to change the version. So this I don't need to do it additionally. So just I need to know the version name and I can configure. Let's say I'm working with the spring, go to the Google and say. In the Google, you can say spring. Spring core. Dependency. Dependency. For Marvin. I'll be getting. The dependency name. It's like some link. With the latest versions. I can copy this. I can copy this link. I can and I can paste it in my XML file. So automatically, all the jar files will be added. See here, M M means Mammon. So what I've done is I'll be having additional file that is called home project object model. So this form contains the dependency. So let's say I have copied that dependency. If I copy and paste it over here, this dependency. And if I say controllers, if I say controllers, your project will be adding the dependencies from the internet. That means all the jar files will be coming.
But all those should be compatible with the ones, right? With the ones I am doing.
Yeah, obviously, I mean, it depends. See, you have installed three, next four has come. So four is compatible with the three. It's a higher version. That's not a problem.
So I need not add any extra jar files again by creating the library folder and then.
Or at all.
The library folder.
Yeah, the higher version will support the lower version. But lower version will not support higher version. Makes sense? Any job, J D B C, I want, I'll go for Google. And type it here. Come on. Maverick dependency. For. J D B C. Open that. So it is coming for spring J D B C and take the, it is spring J D B C. This is coming only J D B C I want, but this is not for spring J D B C, spring with the database.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay, Ron.
Well, it's like.
Yeah.
Fine, perfect. So creating the right project structure, building and developing, deploying the project and generating the. The bar files. So what it does, it makes the project is to build and it provides uniform pay process. It provides positive information dependency list and it is to migrate for a new features. Man, it builds documentation, reporting, S E Ms and releases. Distribution, all the stuff will be taken care by this build tool. It's a tool. Marvin is a build tool. So what we have to do to create a project based on man? Do we have to install anything additionally? No. Just say with the time of creating a new project. So project. And here you have to say. Man. Okay, so it's saying my one project. So select this man for that. And then say next. Are you getting me? And then say next. So I want to create a web project and here just write where. In the filter. Okay. So select this and give your project name. Artifact ID is nothing but your project name. My subject with Maven. Project. That's my project name. And the package also it is by default, it is only created. So if you want to change, you can change it to your project, your package. Com dot my sub. Is my package. Finish. My project is creating my server with Maven. So it is building. The down. If you see M, that is.
So so it's like we will create that Maven, one Maven project. And whenever we want, we will just change the project to what project we want to import that in.
What are the jar files? What are the jar files required for this project? I'll be adding that.
No, 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 yeah, that I got it. Um, I'm asking like there are many projects, right? In the, in our directory. So which project I'm adding? So every time I'll just change the package name. In which one this should import for me.
No, not like that.
You can just add, everything will automatically taken.
Yeah, the package names and all for the project version and jar files, building, we'll call it as building.
Okay, so I just, I just need to create one project with the Mavon things and all setup. That's it. Everything will automatically take.
Right, index dot J S P, all the structure will come. The structure. Web dot X M L.
I'm asking like now my server with Mavon project, that whole folder is fine. Suppose if I want something and. You know, if you see above, J D B C, welcome, J S P, dynamic web, in all, this will automatically be deployed.
These are all general project, they are not Mavon based.
No, it, but what should I do in order to get that to be Mavon based?
Mavon, if you want to convert an existing file into Mavon, existing project into Mavon, then what you have to do is. You have to. You have to convert it. They have to write something additionally. Uh, you have some properties file. Uh, you have to configure your Pop Fire project with the settings, some Mavon settings you have to write, then it will be converted.
Okay, so if I'm creating a new one.
Huh?
If I'm creating a new project and I want this Mavon to be there inside it, so when I'm creating, I have to import. This Mavon project over there in my new project when creating.
Yeah. So, okay, so we'll be working on it, don't worry. So just I have created a project, that's it.
Hmm.
And now in the resources, I have a package. Where is my package? Okay, it's not created, I think, that I'll let you know anyway. Okay, that's it. We'll see tomorrow, uh.
I have so much to work on. I have so much to work on, so let's, I mean, like I completely lost touch with servers.
Okay, so not a problem, you are, I mean, you are clever enough to cache related things and all, I observe that. Okay, so so far whatever we have covered, just have a look into that. And now we will be developing, tomorrow I'll show you complete Mavon application. So that in future also, you have to create all Mavon projects only. Make habit because no one will create a simple project in the, in the real time. The applications are Mavon projects. So you'll be getting to know slowly, huh? Don't worry. So tomorrow I'll see you again, Jyoti. Thank you.
Sure.